The Town of Plaineville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, February 4th, 2018. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Carrier will lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may notice we have a new sound system in place this evening, so hopefully our words will be clearly heard out there. We'll be at some point adjusting any of the volumes if we think they're too loud or too soft, but we have also placed some new microphones at the podiums for those who wish to speak to the council. We'll certainly be able to hear you without any difficulty, so you don't have to get really too, too close to it, but it will enhance your, our ability to hear you as we go forward. So, we'll begin. We do not have any presentations or public hearings, so I will ask for approval of the minutes of January 22nd meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes from January 22nd, 2019 regular meeting.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any discussion on the minutes or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make this evening?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hi. Last Tuesday, I did have the opportunity to attend the Public Information Session on the update on the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, specifically the segment that would go east-west to connect with CT Fast Track. It was held at the New Britain City Hall, and the CROG and other consultants were there to do a presentation. This, of course, is not at the same phase as the north-south phase segment is, and they're looking, at this point, to determine a preferred alignment, and that was the focus of the session. And they took public input, and Town Manager and Town Planner were there, as were about, I think, nine of us from the town were there as well. And I know the manager is going to give more details during his report, but it was very interesting, and they certainly did a, you know, good job of seeking input.
Does anybody else have anything to report? Moving on, we have some appointments and resignations this evening. First motion's a lengthy one, so may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to establish a 150th Anniversary Celebration Committee to provide recommendations to the Town Council for events and/or activities to celebrate the town's milestone and appoint the following individuals: Bernadette Camp Dulstiller of Cleveland Street, Maria Schwertedl -- I don't, I'm sure that I just murdered that name, but 120 Woodford Avenue, Susan DeRosier, Linda Russell from Plaineville Chamber of Commerce, Sally Miller for a Committee on Aging, Nancy Eberhard of the Historical Society, Benjamin Getteman Advisory Wreckin Park, and Stacy Boisian of the Rotary Club, and one representative from the Conservation Commission, Lions Club, and Women's Club.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, any discussion on the motion?
Just one item. We are seeking somebody from the education, whether it's Board of Education or staff person, so if you wanted to add that to it, if they give us a name, then we'll just fill you in on who their volunteer, or who was assigned to do that.
Okay. And my motion to include Board of Education, one representative from, also.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two, Conservation Commission appointment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to ratify the Town Manager's appointment of Michael DeRosier, eight Beckwith Drive, to the Conservation Commission for the term, oops, for the term ending January 15th, 2021. I thought I hadn't turned on my mic again, but it was still on.
These will take a little bit getting used to. All right. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
One item. Mr. DeRosier is here this evening. He's in the audience. He, several weeks ago, probably three or four weeks ago, Town Staff completed putting online fillable forms for somebody who wanted to volunteer, so no longer do you have to call up, have it sent to you, or come in and pick it up, fill it out, send it back, that you could actually go online, fill out what board of commission you want to be on, and then push a button and get it directly sent to you. Mr. DeRosier was one of the first residents to take advantage of that, and we had a discussion last week about his interest, and I think he will be a productive and good member of the Conservation Commission if confirmed, and, you know, he looks forward to it, and I think it's the first time he served on a, on a board of commission if appointed, so I'm glad.
Wonderful.
We have a couple of others that we're working with as well, and bringing them forward to you hopefully in the near future.
Great. Welcome aboard. Volunteers are very important to keeping things going here, so we appreciate that. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Are there any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions this evening? All right. Onto Report of the Town Attorney. Good evening.
Good evening. No report.
No report tonight? Okay. Thank you for coming by. All right. Onto Report of the Town Manager. Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. The first is a Department of Transportation easement request, and that has to do with the municipal center intersection. The State Department of Transportation is planning to replace the traffic signal in front of the municipal center. They plan to install a system that relies on infrared cameras to determine the volume of traffic rather than the trip sensors in the street. As part of the replacement, it is necessary for the state to obtain an easement from the town in order to install the necessary equipment. A copy of the proposed easement map was included in your meeting materials. The easement area constitutes 2,231 square feet, and the state is offering the town $2,000 for its acquisition. Again, this is an easement. Town would still own the property, but it gives them the right to install this equipment on town-owned property. Town Staff has reviewed the proposed easement and have no issues with what has been proposed. New pedestrian crossing push buttons, as well as concrete ramps and sidewalk curbing, will be replaced in certain areas. And in fact, the, the visual when you're crossing that says, you know, is actually going to have a timer on it, so you can tell how many seconds are left, so it's going to be kind of the new technology that you generally see in larger cities and towns, so I think that would be helpful as well. There is an item in the new business regarding this request. Town Engineer John Bossy is here this evening. If you have any questions with regards to this particular easement proposal, between him and I, we should be able to answer, hopefully, all of the questions if you have any. If not, the next item I have is what I've entitled Fiber Discussion. There have been two work sessions of the Town Council regarding the installation of fiber to connect town facilities, including four major pump stations to the wastewater treatment plant. The total estimated cost has changed somewhat. We brought it down to now $711,000. The recommended sources of funding for the fiber project are as follows. This is a recommendation. The capital improvement plan currently has $200,000 allocated for this project. We've been talking about it for several years now, and $200,000 had been allocated previously. $250,000 is proposed to come from the Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Upgrade Project, connecting the pump stations back to the wastewater treatment plant. $25,000 from an e-grade grant, that would come from hooking up some of the school facilities, and the remaining $237,000 would come from the CIP budget, future budgets, over the next five years. That's what's being proposed. The project would provide a myriad of benefits to all town and school departments by providing high-speed internet services to all of their facilities. Because the town would own the fiber, there would be cost savings, as the town would no longer have to pay for certain internet connections, and the fiber would allow for voice-over-IP phone service, resulting in additional cost savings going forward. It is estimated that the annual cost savings after installation would be in the vicinity of $42,500 in the first year, and increasing by at least 2% per year going forward. But what is as important as the cost savings is the fact that the fiber will take care of the weakness in the police communications existing system that relies on its connection to the repeaters that are located at Connecticut Commons, Tofflon School, and the Buildings and Grounds Department. We have repeaters there so that the signals couldn't get to all areas of the town from the central location at the police station. We actually have to have repeaters. These connections are via rented T1 lines and a myriad, and, you know, I don't like to use myriad twice, but I did in this particular instance, and a myriad of switchgear that can compromise the system in case of failure or during a natural emergency when the power may be out for a long period of time. Fiber project would eliminate this potential weakness in the police communication system. It should be noted that only $37,000 would be requested in fiscal year '20 budget if the project was proposed as, if the project was approved as proposed, with future allocations of approximately $50,000 plus or minus over the next four years. With the potential cost savings, the net cost to the project would be in the $25,000 to $45,000 range, due to the net cost of the remaining $237,000, depending upon how the remaining balance is financed. There is an item in the new business that would authorize the use of $250,000 towards the fiber installation, and up to $150,000 to make improvements to the treatment plan and the four pump stations as part of the Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Upgrade Project. There are sufficient monies available in the project contingencies account to fund this portion of the project. However, in order for the fiber project to be incorporated with the Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Upgrade, a decision must be made as soon as possible. A decision on whether or not to internally finance the remaining $200,000 through the sewer fund can be made at a later date. So, I have several staff members here. Chief Katania is here this evening to perhaps answer any questions you might have about the police, the police issues and the benefits of, to the police department. Joel Ossa was here from the Water Pollution Control Authority to talk about the need as far as the connection to the pump stations and to answer any questions you may have with respect to that. And Kevin is here also from the school to speak to any of the other questions that you may have about the fiber project.
Okay. We could ask a question. I have to get used to this. We'd asked a question at the last meeting regarding another type of communication that's coming down the road, and is it a 5?
5G.
5G. And you were going to ask Kevin if he could give us some information on that?
And that was in your package.
Is that? Oh, okay.
But we could ask Kevin to step forward and to summarize that if you like.
Okay. If you don't mind. I went through it, and I apologize if I missed that, Kevin, but it's always nice to hear from you anyway. Thanks.
Is it on already? Can you hear me? Okay. So, 5G is a technology that's going to replace or be the next step in our cellphone communication. It will be used possibly in some areas eventually for residential possibility, but it's still a carrier-grade wireless system that still runs off of fiber optics. It doesn't replace fiber. It just makes it easier for that last piece to connect to multiple locations. So if you had a neighborhood and you wanted to connect every house, you would put a repeater nearby and maybe get 20 houses, but you still would have to have fiber. And 5G connects, the layout for 5G, and this is what's going to take the longest for it to deploy, is you need a repeater or an antenna every 500 to 1,000 feet. So, we're going to see significantly more antennas put up by Verizon, AT&amp;T, and other carriers to do it. The other portion of that is a 5G network is a metered connection. It is not unlimited. So, even though you may hear of unlimited data plans, most of them, once you hit a certain limit of data, they slow it down. So those are, you're paying for the usage. The fiber optic that we're looking to put in is unlimited. It's ours. It's, we send as much data over it as we want and as fast as we can afford to run it, basically. There's no theoretical limit of light right now of how fast we can, how much data, and how much bandwidth. So the other reason we're really looking at the fiber is we heard about the police repeater. Right now, I think I've explained it before, like how we connect up to the, up to Tofflon, it's a myriad of jumps. When we build this fiber network, the connection basically would theoretically come out of the police repeater at the police station and go directly into the equipment at the Tofflon School. There would be no intermediate item to go down. If both pieces of equipment are running, then the radios are sticking up, same at the other two locations. Right now, we're using T1 lines, and those, those are going away. Those are old technology that are caught, they're just increasing the cost of T1 lines because they're copper circuits that they don't want to maintain anymore. So, I don't know if that covers most of it.
I think so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
While Kevin's up here, does anybody have any questions? For Kevin regarding any of this fiber program or what we're attempting to do, and he's been taking the point in terms of the technology of this proposal, so if anybody has a question, that would be the time. Okay. Thank you very much, Kevin. Okay.
Would you like me to ask Chief Katania to step forward and answer any questions you might have, or at least say a few words?
Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
Now I understand. We talked about it.
Okay. I guess we're all set. I don't hear anybody.
You'll stick around for when we get to number three. You'll stick around till we actually vote on it later in case a question does come up, and that's, I don't have a question right now.
And Joel Ossa is here as well, so.
Yes, thank you.
And he'll, and he'll stay as well.
Okay.
Right, Joel? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. If that's it for the time being, for the moment, I will go to the fire truck purchase. At the December 17th, 2018 meeting, the Town Council authorized the Fire Truck Committee to negotiate with Bulldog Fire Apparatus for the replacement of Engine 2. The Fire Truck Committee is recommending the purchase of Engine 2 in the amount of $600,000. It's probably an amount not to exceed $674,670, since there were some contingency dollars in there. There is an item in the new business regarding this recommendation. If approved, the Fire Truck Committee will negotiate with Bulldog Fire Apparatus for the purchase of the tower replacement with the remaining funds from the referendum authorization, which amounts to $1,425,330, after subtracting the amount that we're recommending this evening. I have spoken to the Vice President of KME regarding whether this amount is sufficient to purchase the tower, and he has assured me that it is. He will provide documentation that the tower purchase will be in line with bid prices that have been submitted through one of the national sales cooperative contract systems. This is a new way of bidding large pieces of equipment that I learned about when I attended a conference back in the fall, and so he said that he would match up those prices with what was bid, you know, nationally, to match up with, you know, to ensure that the purchase price is in line with a bidding process. But due to, you know, due to several factors, including the fact that we have KME equipment, you know, they've been the low bid since 1994 on five separate bids, you know, there's a host of reasons why staying with KME equipment makes a lot of sense if we can ensure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. But again, the recommendation this evening is the purchase of the engine number two as it was bid, and the committee would come back to the, to the council, you know, before, hopefully, March 28th, which is, there was some, KME and Bulldog had made a, an offer to, you know, if we made a, made a second, second purchase or a second, put in a second order by that date, that they would give us further discounts off the second, you know, the second engine, second fire apparatus as well. So, I know that the chief and the deputy chief are here this evening. If you have any last, hopefully, would be any last minute questions for them, and I know that we've discussed this, you know, several, several meetings and, you know, but.
Any questions regarding the fire purchase apparatus? We are going to vote on this also on our agenda, and if you want to hold your questions till then, that's fine. Otherwise, they're here tonight.
I'm also, I'm ready to go.
Everybody else set? All right. Thank you.
Next item I have is augmented reality. Last summer, the Town Council heard a presentation from Adam Reiser from, I say augmented reality, but it's actually nucl, nuclear.
Nuclear augmented reality.
Okay. There we go. Thank you. Regarding his proposal to represent the Town of Plaineville in all matters related to augmented reality, advertising, and marketing, at that time, the Town Attorney was directed to perform some research and report back to the council regarding possible legal ramifications of such technology. The Town Attorney opinion was included in your meeting information packages this evening. The Town Attorney is recommending that the town, and I'll quote, "The town should proceed with caution, understanding that legal landscape on this technology may be changing rapidly," or "may change rapidly," unquote. The proposed agreement would be for two years. There was no obligation for the town to pay anything to, to Adam Reiser and his company unless they are able to secure a proposal that is satisfactory to the Town Council, so all, this point, all he's looking for is the idea that, that he would represent the town and be able to go out and see if there's a market for this type of technology. He believes there is a market for this technology and could have a monetary benefit to Plaineville. It is recommended that the Town Council give Adam's company, I wrote it differently, so, nuclear, nucleus augmented reality, the opportunity to see if there's a beneficial arrangement that can be secured. And there is an item in the new business regarding this recommendation. I know it was a little bit, a little while ago that we spoke about this, and Adam's here if you have any questions, you know, regarding augmented reality or his, you know, his proposal this evening.
Okay. Anybody, does anybody have any questions about this? I know it was a few months ago we discussed it, and Adam was here. Does anybody have any questions about this, or you're okay to move on?
I don't see where it is under, you said it was under fairness?
That's right.
I don't see it.
Yeah. I think it would have to be added to the new business. I'm sorry about that.
Oh, okay.
If, if you wanted to add it to the new business, that's correct. What do you say to answer questions that you may have?
Okay. I don't have any questions. I don't know if anybody else, you're all set with that, with what you learned about it? Okay. Anybody else need anything? All right. Thank you for coming.
Next item I have is the road bond bids. Town Staff is preparing plans to complete the final year of the road bond program. They're proposing that the town purchase catch basin tops and other related products from United Concrete Products in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Town Staff is also recommending that concrete blocks and bricks be purchased from Cromwell Concrete in an amount of not to exceed $25,000. Both of these companies are the low bidder through the state bid process. We gave you some documentation with regards to that as well. Town Staff is also recommending that bituminous concrete materials be purchased from Tilcon in an amount not to exceed $600,000. Tilcon was the low bidder under the state bid process as well. Finally, Town Staff is recommending that Jones Construction be engaged to perform the construction, repairs, and adjustments to various catch basins in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Jones Construction was the low bidder for this work last year and has agreed to hold their prices at the same amount for this year as well. According to the roadway superintendent, Dominic Moschini, Jones Construction was very responsive, did a very good job. They competed against eight other bidders a year ago, and they were the low bidder, and they did a good job. He'd like to continue to, continue to use Jones Construction, and they've agreed to hold the price at the same amount that they had last year. There are several items in the new business regarding these recommendations. I'm pretty sure those are in the new business. If there's any questions, we'll answer them as well. Okay. Next item is the Farmington Canal Trail update. Last Tuesday evening, there was a public information session in New Britain to discuss the proposed east-west alignment between downtown Plaineville and the Connecticut Fast Track Station in New Britain, as reported by Rosemary earlier in the meeting. There were approximately 25 people in attendance. The plan is to have the trail primarily alongside Woodford and White Oak Avenues that would be separated from the street with a barrier of some sort. It's to be designed if the alignment is approved. Once it reaches the area around Tilcon, the trail would be placed off-road adjacent to the highway on the outside of the existing sound barrier. According to the consultants, approximately 97% plus is planned to be what they would, they would call off the road. Comments were solicited, and CROG and VHB, who are the consultants, will review them and consider possible changes to the proposed alignment. It is anticipated that CROG and VHB will be making a presentation to the Plaineville Town Council at a future meeting regarding the proposed route to New Britain. So this is just an updated, and they're, will be finalizing a recommendation, probably come back in the next several months. I wouldn't expect it for at least 60 days. Additionally, last week, Town Staff met with DOT and CROG staff to discuss the design phase of the north-south route, alignment C through Plaineville. The DOT staff will be designing the trail through Plaineville. The first step is to gather survey information and to determine the location of wetlands and other environmental information along the proposed route. The survey work is expected to begin in about one month. DOT staff indicated that there will be opportunities during the process for public input on the proposed design. They are anticipating that it will take up to a year to perform the survey work and the wetlands determination. They also said that a final plan would be completed no earlier than December 2021. That's the, that's the final design, with possible construction beginning in 2022. It is anticipated the trail could be constructed in phases, with the first phase being from Town Line Road to Norton Park. Town Staff will be providing updates as the design process moves forward. There's no questions? I have two other items before we get to happenings. Next is the Christmas tree collection update. The Christmas tree collection was completed by the Roadways Department. A total of 624 trees were collected and brought to the transfer station for disposal. It was over a week's period of time and seemed to go off without hitch. I didn't hear any negative feedback with regards to that, but thought you might be interested to know there were 624 trees that were left out at the curb. Grand list. The October 1st, 2018 grand list is complete and has been signed by the Town Assessor, Anne Marie Herring. The grand list, after exemptions, totals $1,396,621,830. This is an increase of $7,726,971 from the previous grand list. The 0.56% increase included real estate increasing by $5.6 million. Last year, that increase was $2.4 million. Personal property increasing by $1.6 million. Last year's personal property was increased was $2.7 million. And motor vehicles increasing by $524,000, when motor vehicles increased by $2.75 million last year. Overall, the October 2018 grand list would generate $261,481 under the current mill rate of 33.84. Last year's grand list increase was 0.57%. This one is 0.56%, so essentially the same percentage increase, although I did give you some information about the, you know, some of the changes. You know, real estate increased, you know, significantly more than, you know, previous year's. Personal property increase was less than 2017's grand list, and motor vehicles was, the increase was less than the increase in 2017. Not that it decreased, it just didn't increase as much from the previous year. So, we saw increases in all three areas with a, you know, a, you know, almost double the increase in, in real estate. And I gave you some additional detail as far as the report is concerned, comparing, you know, 2014, 15, 16, 17, and 18, as well as how the percentages of real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles has changed. Not too much over, over the, that five-year period in terms of the percentage of the total grand list. There's no questions about the grand list at this point in time. I would turn it over to Scott, remind him to push his button, and, and give a happenings report.
Good evening. I just have three items to report on happening over at the Senior Center. On Monday, February 11th, at 12:30 PM, they're having questions for the Social Worker Hour. This is for anyone who has questions about Medicare, Medicaid, Medicare Part D, or housing options, or if they want to find out any information on Alzheimer's help or home care. Please speak with Stephanie Susie. She's available to meet individually with Plaineville residents age 60 and over. No registration is needed. And on Thursday, February 14th, at 10:30 AM, they're offering ukulele demonstrations. Prior students will give a short concert at the end of that event. Prior students will give a short concert at the end of that event. Please call the senior center to register for that event. And they're asking that individual signup will start on February 6th. And they still have tickets to the UConn women's basketball game that's scheduled for February 9th, which is on a weekend against Temple University. And this game is going to be played at Gamble in Storrs, Connecticut. Tickets and transportation cost is $28, which is due at registration. The bus leaves the senior center at 10:30 AM and arrives in time for lunch and arrives back in Plainville approximately 4:30 PM. And the game time for that event is 1 PM. You can also drive yourself and just purchase the tickets from the senior center at $20 each. And they ask that you call the senior center to register for that event. And the number is 860-747-5728. That's all I have to report on. You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for town manager, for Scott's report that he just gave us? Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on, we are now in the public comment portion of our meeting. During this portion of the meeting, we invite the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak to the council. And we have, as I said, new sound equipment, so we'll hear you clearly and distinctly. So I don't know if we had a signup list, Carol? Should we check? Sometimes folks sign up before we begin. Thank you. Catherine. All right, we do have signup, Catherine Labella. See if I can position myself to be heard. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. Catherine Labella, 50 Pierce Street. Since the town sponsored this particular program, I'd like to update the council about my experience with Simple Recycling. For three consecutive recycling days, we dutifully put our pink bags outside beside the recycling carts at Old Mill condominiums. The bags were not picked up. Because the program was starting up, we gave it several tries. After the third time, I emailed Simple Recycling, giving them my name, address, town, and state, explaining the situation. I received an email back asking for my name, address, town, and state. After giving the information a second time, they indicated someone would pick the bags up and several days later, someone actually did. However, no pink replacement bags were left to allow for the continued use of the program. Perhaps it should be renamed the Not So Simple Recycling Program. A quick question for the council before I end too. Has the council or the town received an update regarding the federal build grant award status for the trail? Town manager said no. I have not seen anything like that and he is saying no. We don't have that. Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not signed up? Yes, sir?
Good evening, town council. Gary Garuski, I live at 28 View Street in Plainville. Recently spoken about Tilcon doing some roadwork earlier in his discussion of about 600 something thousand dollars. I was just wondering if anyone else had a bid or it was just given to Tilcon?
The state does a bidding process and allows the town, the municipalities to piggyback on the bid should we choose to do so. So the bid process for this particular area of the state, Tilcon was the low bid for the state, and rather than go out to bid on our own, we just used, we just piggyback on their low bid process, which, you know, given the volume that they put down, you know, it appears to make a lot of sense that to piggyback on a larger, a larger bid process than to go out to bid on a smaller one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Well, as you know, this is about my sixth time here on the Tilcon blasting. I'm sad to report that part of our town is now destroyed with foundation, well digging companies in the area of View Street and Maria Road, daily. Irrigation companies, daily. Wells filled with dirt. Groundwater three inches deep around the whole foundation. Trees, three feet healthy trees falling from the saturation in the ground. I'm a founding member of the Protect Our Waterways system, which we just had a meeting before I came here, I left early, in which it was discussed, the town of Suddington, the town of New Britain, and the town of Berlin are all against the Tilcon's expansion plan. And quite frankly, we're all gathering to become stronger, starting with seven, now 3,000 active members. The only town that hasn't denounced this plan is our town manager, Mr. Lee. So I'm here tonight to ask the council, what's it going to take for the town of Plainville to wake up and see that the damage is done? But yeah, our town manager is the only one in the surrounding towns that I mentioned that hasn't stepped up to the plate since that he's totally against any more blasting on. So I would like to hear comments on record from Mr. Lee about this. And you guys don't know, for the first time in my 59 years, there are now signs on Ledge Road where the water crosses and the ice freezes, warning you that there's ice on the road. Today on View Street alone, there was two well digging companies. And on Maria Road, two well digging companies and two irrigation companies. The groundwater coming off the mountain, the damage is done. So I would like an answer on record from Mr. Lee where he stands with this. And I heard your bell, so thank you for letting me.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
There's two items. First item with regards to the expansion plan, the state has denied the legislation that would move that project forward, so that project is dead. So that project is not going forward. The expansion project is closed. It's not an issue that we even need to take stand on.
I made a mistake with the expansion problem. I'm talking about the blasting on the side of Plainville that was proposed.
Okay, well.
What, six, eight years?
Okay, all right. The, and I haven't taken a position with regards to that. I mean, it's not my, it's not my. Let me finish if you like. It's, the Tilcon is permitted, they're doing work in a permitted quarry zone. The permitted quarry zone is, was established by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so they're doing their work pursuant to approvals that were given many years ago. It's not something that comes through the town manager's office. It's not something that I have any control over. It's the Planning and Zoning Commission that approved that. They are following the regulations as they see it and that blasting is monitored by the fire marshal's office. Fire marshal's office can get readings with respect to the, with respect, they can get, he does get them. And I know that I've shared some of them with you, so I know that you've seen some of them as well. You may not agree with them, but you've seen some of them.
Well, I haven't seen a report on over 300 complaints of blasting in the area.
We have a list, we have a listing of that.
I have a listing.
A listing. I don't have the. A lot of people, a lot of people just call. A lot of people just call and a lot, of the 300, 250 of them are from two people. Okay. I'm just telling you that, you know, it isn't 300 different people that are complaining. It's.
It's a loose.
Okay, all right. So you know what I'm talking about. So with regards to damages, if people have issues that they believe is related to the blasting, I certainly will coordinate with Tilcon to meet with the residents and we can attend those meetings as well and go over those concerns. I can tell you that the groundwater is high all around the community. I can tell you that it would be very difficult for the blasting, you know, the water's coming from up the hill, down the hill. The blasting is being done at the bottom. Okay, so I would, I would find it difficult to believe that the high groundwater in your area is due to the blasting at Tilcon, but that's just, you know, without looking at that further, that would be my initial reactions. But if people believe that there's damage as a result of the blasting, that can be looked into, but that's looked on an individual basis. I haven't received one complaint in my office about any issues with Tilcon blasting in in a couple of years.
Excuse me?
We spoke, you and I spoke, but I'm saying that I haven't received any complaints with regards to any damages as a result of blasting in quite some time, other than the conversation I had with you. And I thought we resolved that issue to a certain degree. You know, we walked away and you were relatively.
Well, like I stated, the damage is done, sir.
Well.
Where's the blasting now below?
Well, I'm not sure, well, if you're talking about damage.
It's wild for mother nature to catch up. It always does.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the high groundwater around the homes on Maria Road is a result of Tilcon. I would find that difficult to, but maybe there is a scientific reason and, you know, and we would be willing to coordinate a meeting to look into that.
Would you be willing to set up a scientific study?
Mr. Garuski, if I can interrupt, I don't mean to cut this short.
We could talk offline.
I would suggest, this is getting rather lengthy and in specifics. If you don't mind, you could set up some time with the town manager and anybody else that may have additional interest in this to meet with him and he can do some of the research that he said he could perform for you. Okay?
Thank you, manager.
Thank you.
As we speak, I pump 200 gallons of water out of the ground.
Okay.
In my foundation every day.
All right.
100 gallons, meters.
And I could tell you that around the community, people are pumping out their basements and pumping out the high groundwater miles and miles away from Tilcon as well, so.
It's been a bad season.
Been a bad season, so, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council tonight?
David Albert, 56 Hollyberry Lane. My mother-in-law lives on Fors Shaw Avenue, near the blasting. Five or six out of the eight or nine units there just had to install radon units in their sellers. That's a direct result of the blasting from Tilcon. No one speaks about it, but, you know, it's bad. I wanted to talk about, I was not here at the last meeting, but the concession stand. When you look at where the revenues from this concession stand are going to be going, I ask you to look at the Norton Park deed, pretty specific on whether or not they allow concessions and where the monies are going to go. That's all, just take a look at it. And I'm wondering with the bike trail, what exactly is the role of the town inland wetlands committee with this trail going through, you know, 90,000 acres or square feet of wetlands and a mile of floodplain? I mean, all I hear is that the state is going to look at it, but, and I see, I haven't, I haven't never said pro or con on this trail, but I can tell you that from what I'm seeing is this is being pushed down Plainville's throat by the state of Connecticut. That may not be true, but that's the perception I'm getting. And they want it, but it doesn't mean you guys have to approve it. I wanted to talk about the sidewalks. Same people, not shoveling. And a lot of them are businesses. I know that the police are really tied up with whatever they've got, but you need, it's the same people every year that don't do it. And they need to get some type of warning and then get citations or fined. I'm telling you, it's the same people over and over and over. Let's see. Last time I was here, I talked about the zoning. You really need to look at the zoning. I just feel that it's really skewed towards the developers. It's their engineers, their soil test people. Someone wants to complain about it, they can't go on their property because it's private property. And then what happens if it's passed 10 years from now? You know, they can say they do it, but what if they are impacting wetlands? I don't think there's any, any way of, you know, policing once that happens. And the last thing, and I'm sorry I'm over, but this augmented reality, I know in the business world, biggest thing you try to control is risk. And that thing is just full of risk. I don't think you want to wake up and have Plainville be in a guinea pig and see yourselves in newspapers for some bad incident that occurs. So tread lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? I'll let you answer when we have everybody after, Adam, after everybody has their opportunity to speak, you'll certainly be able to answer because there may be other questions, but it's after everybody's all done. Okay? Does anybody else have any wish to speak to? Roberta, is that you over there? Okay.
Roberta Loria, is this right? Do I have this right? Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. For the benefit of Carol and the town council minutes this evening, I would like to say that I oppose any trail or alignment that will be on, next to, or have an impact on any neighborhood in Plainville, especially Perrin Road will be inches from residents' backyards. As has been said by many residents, if there are no rails available, there should be no trails. I had the opportunity to attend a CROG meeting at New Britain City Hall this past Tuesday, January 29th. The purpose of the meeting was to show area residents the east-west layout for the trail. What I found very interesting about this meeting was that unlike Plainville, New Britain will be going parallel to Route 72, utilizing state roads, not private properties. Unlike Plainville, it will also be more direct. What I found different about this meeting was when the bike people spoke, they thought it was a wonderful idea to have this kind of a layout, being right next to 72, to utilize that path. I have a question. Why is it okay for bike people to utilize a path next to 72, Black Rock Avenue, but it's being forced down residents' throats to have it in Plainville neighborhoods, when we have Route 10 and 72 right here? I know firsthand people that have been bullied and threatened because of this trail. Why don't you make it easier for everyone and have it continue down 72 and get it away from Plainville where it doesn't belong? Earlier, our town manager spoke about a meeting that was held in regard to the design. My question is, when will these minutes for this meeting be available as well as the survey work for this, for the public to see?
I'll find out for you. I'm not sure when they'll be ready. I'll get back to you.
I think we all have a right to know, particularly those that are being impacted. We all have a right to know what's going on right from the beginning. And not having minutes of any kind is just plain wrong.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Edman?
Edmund, Joel Edmund, 63 Hollyberry Lane. My sister Joanne and I attended the trail meeting at New Britain City Hall last week. I was not that impressed with what New Britain is calling a linear park, obviously not rails to trails, due to the rails are still active just like Plainville. The meeting was not well-attended, with mostly bicycle people, a Plainville town manager, Lee, and one Plainville council member. I really do not care what New Britain does, even though I am against it because it is stupid, a waste of taxpayers' money, and certainly not scenic. Not too much was expressed about the Plainville section. What I disapprove of is installing another expensive conduit under Crooked Street, as well as many tight areas like Pine Street, East Main Street, and Woodford Avenue. And for what? A few bicyclists, and most likely a few troublemakers, on a poorly-designed trail too close to neighboring houses and businesses. Question, why does a town line road need to be redesigned, especially after it has just been repaved? I actually asked you that, Mr. Lee.
Can you answer that question?
Yeah, I believe you said it's kind of a mandate approach what they did, but it's perfect right now. There's nothing wrong with it, you know. And who knows how long that will last. I've seen it last, I mean, I sold asphalt for 40 years. And it has just been revealed that Robert Jackson Way will not be used as a trail bed for Alignment C, of which I am totally opposed to any alignment through the town of Plainville that does not adhere to the original rails-to-trails alignment. It's only a matter of time before those rails become abandoned and the town of Plainville taxpayers will be on a hook forever to support a poorly-designed alternate trail. So sad, so sad. One more item, this $282,000 concession stand and toilets for Norton Park. How big is this building supposed to be? One could build a mighty big structure with a cellar, including the cost of land it's built on. As a point of information, Steve Whitkey built the concession stand with toilets at Trumpa Park for free. It's almost a total waste of money, our taxpayers' money, to do this. Last paragraph.
Your time is up, Mr. Edmund. If you could wrap it up, please, I'd appreciate it.
Last paragraph. It's still standing, probably no cellar, on a concrete pad. Just because there is a free grant to build it does not qualify it to be overdone. It sounds to me like there is a lot of fluff there. If you foresee something, say something. Any questions? I would actually like to hear some answers. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Joanne?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I too strongly oppose Alignment C of the trail that impacts backyards, front yards, through the park. That's Perrin Road, Pierce Street, Broad Street, Hemingway Street, and into the park. And I'm going to talk about this concession stand. You know, you have so little parking over at the park now as it is because it's an extension of the schoolyard, it's a sports center, and now that little gravelly spot that's on the right-hand side of the first entrance is going to house this stupid structure. You already have a concession stand by the pool, and then you have the bathrooms and bathrooms, and then you have on the other side, near the grounds and building, you have the bathrooms. So now we've got to have... And it's not for the widow kids, as was explained last meeting. It's going to be so timely, you've had the money for four years. Why didn't you build it four years ago if it's for the widow kids? It's going to be so timely. I mean, you must think we're stupid. It is for the trail birds. What else? Who else? I mean, it's all such a waste of money. This whole thing is a waste of money and you should, as the finance group up there, you should see this. And you should be for what the state of Connecticut is having to spend. And you should say, no, we don't want it. Or if you have to have it, go down Route 10. It's already marked. All you have to do is go down a little ways on Northwest Drive to Route 10, all the way into Southington. Done. Leave the town part alone. You're not going to make that much money on food and drink. And now we've got to have a concession stand of a combination of a Pisswar slash snack shack? Come on. It's disgusting.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. Just a quick, I wasn't going to ask, but just for these conversations here, the concession stand, I'll be honest with you, when it was first presented, it said the soccer league. This is for the Little League Soccer League, right, for the children that play there on Saturdays and Sundays?
I'm sure they will certainly use that, but it could be used by other groups as well.
You're one step ahead. Then my next question would be, is they play Little League baseball there? Not Little League, but...
No, they don't.
Do we have teams that play there?
Softball.
Adult softball.
Just adult. How about the football?
They are there.
And they can use the concession stand also?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I was going to ask. And I'll just drop that because I'm... The main reason I wanted to come up here is I just wanted to compliment, remember a little while back, the Dick's Supporting Goods incident that we had in Plainville, which I felt was major. And the two things I'd like to bring up there was the, compliment the emergency phone system that kept residents up to date to exactly what was going on. And I think another, which the other part is what I think everybody should pay close attention to, was the professional manner in which the Plainville police handled this situation. And all I have to say to them is thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else? Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else?
If I could just say one more thing. I just want to compliment the highway Dominic Machini.
You can come up because we like to take compliments and pass them on.
No, I have to say that Dominic is doing a great job.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone drove in New Britain or Bristol or surrounding towns through this last ice storm, but they were just a mess. I actually had an accident where someone spun out and I ended up driving my car into a snowbank in Bristol because of the roads. So kudos to him.
Thanks.
He's doing it right, where he didn't plow in sand. He let the snow fall. Did it very professionally. So in all the times I say bad things, I just do want to let you guys know that there are some good things too that I see.
Well, thank you. And we'll be sure to pass that on to Dominic and his crew. We agree with you that they do a great job. And you can certainly tell where the town lines are in regard to snow removal and ice control. I live quite near Bristol, and there is a difference when I come up to the top of that hill on West Broad Street and almost slide through the stop sign. And as I come down the hill to Plainville, it's nice and clean. So we'll be sure to pass on that compliment. And thank you for thinking of that. Okay, nobody else has anything to say? We're going to close public comment. Joanne?
Oh, I know, but with regard to the roads, do we know what roads are going to be done this coming year?
I don't think I have that list. Do we have the list available for the paving you're talking about?
Yeah.
The paving?
We're still putting that together, and it'll be reviewed by the Capitol Improvement Committee as well, and then recommendation, or at least, you know, it'll come to the council for, you'll be aware of it.
Okay. I know that you usually give a report at some point which streets are going to be done in the upcoming paving season, so...
Yes.
It's being put together.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for all your comments. Adam? Did you want to make a comment? I think there was a question regarding your proposal to the town, and everybody has had an opportunity, so you can...
Sure. So just to address the gentleman who raised concerns about augmented reality. I agree. There is a ton of risk to towns when it comes to augmented reality. There's not a lot of legislation. There's barely any at all, as a matter of fact. But I think the bigger risk would be doing nothing at all and letting companies like Google and Facebook just kind of do what they want to in terms of augmented reality content and advertising on town property. So, you know, in the town attorney's report that was prepared for tonight, he suggested the town proceed cautiously. And I think it would be uncautious to just kind of let things happen without having any sort of foresight or plan for what to do when augmented reality becomes a larger part of our everyday technology. So hopefully that kind of addresses your concerns. And I want to kind of reiterate that what Nucleus Augmented Reality does is we are a consulting firm to help towns manage the augmented reality content on their properties. So when we're working together, I think I raised this example when we met previously, I'd be kind of like the agent for a baseball player. So the town is the baseball player, I'm the agent. I'm here to help the town seek out deals and manage the content for no charge at all. And I only, and Nucleus Augmented Reality is only compensated if the town does decide to accept a deal. So there is absolutely no charge at all, just to work with me and to have me allow you, allow me to represent the town.
Okay. Thanks, Adam. I appreciate that. Okay, moving on. We do not have any old business items. Did we add that one item to our agenda for augmented, for his business to be Nucleus Alignment Augmented Reality, right? Did we add that to the agenda?
We did not yet. You did not as yet.
Okay. Before we move any further, so we don't forget to do that, can I have a motion to add?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to add Nucleus Augmented Reality.
That'll be number eight.
Representation agreement?
Representation agreement to number eight.
Okay.
And move number eight down to number nine.
I have a motion in a second. Oh, no, I need a second. Sorry, got ahead of myself. I have a second now. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We just added it to our agenda. Just to be clear, we haven't voted on it yet. So that was a procedural item we had to take care of. Okay, now, moving on to new business.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an authorizing resolution regarding the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation's acquisition of an easement in front of the municipal center for property file number 171-417-001.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of Plainville Water Pollution Control Authority Pump Station Monitoring System Upgrades. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was hoping that we could move this to next month to discuss it, wait until after we have the governor's budget and know what's going to happen with our finances, get a better handle on that before we actually decide to spend what would be in excess of $700,000 on this project, right?
Okay. Did you want to do it at the first meeting in March or second meeting? Do you have a date that you want to do this?
No, I would think the first meeting. That would be a month from now.
Okay.
I don't think a month would hurt, and I think it would be more responsible of us if we wait and see how everything's going to play out for the state before we make a decision on that.
Uh huh. Okay. Are there any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Would Councilwoman Tompkins, would you be comfortable if we went ahead with this tonight under the condition that if the governor's budget, and I assume, and if I'm wrong, correct me, that you're worried about the sewer plant funding?
Yes.
With regards, that we put just a stipulation that if the governor's budget includes any reduction in the sewer plant project, that we wouldn't move forward or we reconvene and rediscuss? I don't know how you want to put it, but...
Yeah, I don't know why we would do that if we can just put it off a month. It's just putting it off one month. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, but we've discussed this for quite a while now.
She's answering you, so let her finish her thought, and then you can respond.
Right. I don't, to me, that's, it becomes more convoluted and putting stipulations in it when it, all we could do is just push it off for a month and have it on the agenda for the first meeting in March, and we would have more information than we have now. So I don't know why it needs to be any more difficult than that.
Well, I mean, under that logic, then we, I mean, there's always a reason not to vote on something under that scenario, the way you put it. I mean, of course, more information is good, but I mean, this is something we've discussed for quite a bit of time, and we spent a lot of time discussing it. I just, I don't think there'll be any, you know, as far as the governor's budget, I don't think there'll be any direct impacts to the town of Plainville. I think if you look at the way we're looking to finance this, you know, it's costing the town $50,000 a year. We're saving $40,000 and change each year. And in fact, this project would pay for itself after six years. So I don't know. You know, I'm comfortable with the numbers. I don't think what the state's going to do is going to impact this project certainly. And I don't think anything the state could take away would change the fact that, you know, I think this is something the town needs. I, you know, quite frankly, with the public safety implications involved, with the money savings, I think, I'm comfortable moving forward tonight. And I don't think what the governor's going to propose is going to change, change what direction we should go in.
Well, I guess you have a lot more faith in him than I do, so...
Well, you know, I have a lot more faith than us, quite honestly. I think the administration, I think up here, we've asked some very good questions. I think this is something that, you know, I don't want to say pat ourselves on the back, but I think this is something the town should move forward with as quickly as possible.
Madam Chair? Yes.
Yeah, you know, I just, I really have to say, I don't see it as likely that there's going to be a change in the funding for a project that's already underway. I mean, we've broken ground on this project, you know, and, you know, contracts have been awarded, work is being done. You know, I know certainly we had that experience more than a year ago with changes in state funding, but I don't think this is the kind of project that would be, you know, would fall into that sort of category. I think once you've broken ground on a project... I think once you've broken ground on a project and have contracts, I just think that seems to be very unlikely.
We haven't broken ground on this project.
Not on.
I know you're talking about the water pollution control project. This project has not, there has been nothing done in terms of the fiber project in the town yet.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the overall WPC project.
Okay, that has begun. That's correct. That's accurate.
That's what I was referring to, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If, it makes you feel more comfortable to wait a month, is there, can we ask, is there any reason why we can't wait one more month? I mean, I think it's something that we're going to move forward with in the end, but if that's really what you need, is there any difference?
Yeah. Well.
Madam Chair.
Mad.
I think the question is, what kind of impact does that cause?
What kind of impact would it cost if we waited until we understand what the governor's budget is in regard to our revenues? I think it's going to have a big impact.
No, I'm looking to the town manager or the chief to just.
Couple of things. One is, if the concern is the sewer funding, the funding for the phosphorus.
No.
Project. I thought, I heard that, but that's not the issue. Is that, is that an issue at all that he could pull the funding on the phosphorus project? I thought Debbie said that. If not, I.
I don't think he said phosphorus.
He didn't say.
No, you said that, not me.
No.
Your concern is not that, not that it's going to impact the phosphorus project?
No.
I said water pollution control project. I did not say phosphorus project, but.
Okay. So, is the concern the impact on the water pollution control project? Or is it, I'm not understanding what the, what the, you know, what the concern is with regards to funding. Funding of what portion of it? You're talking about ECS funding?
No, I think it's adding the water pollution control fiber into the other fiber project that we already, we had already discussed along, last year. It's rolling that all into it.
Okay. I mean, I could ask Joe to step up and talk about the benefits of.
Robert, this is about waiting until we know what our budget, how our funding is going to be from the state. We're waiting one month before we vote on something that's, oh, and it's a big project that's in excess of $700,000. That's what it's about. Why can't we wait one month?
Madam Chair, can I just say something? I don't mean.
Well, no, not yet.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure Robert wants to respond to Councilwoman Tompkins' concerns. If you're okay with her concerns, that's fine. We have a couple of things going on here. I want to give everybody an opportunity to have their time.
Well, certainly, we are running up into a deadline as far as including it as part of the phosphorus project, because there's a lead time for finishing it at the same, you know, the phosphorus project is supposed to be done in approximately 16 months, and we're anticipating that the lead time to do the fiber portion of it between the design and the installation is probably 14 months. So if all, if timing goes, you know, according to plan, we could wait a month, for sure, assuming that everything, you know, we don't get, you know, the phosphorus plant project doesn't end sooner, or the fiber installation, if approved, extends longer. So we're trying to get them to end about the same time. So, based upon our current estimates, about a 14-month lead time to install, install and have it up working as part of the phosphorus project, and we have 16 months left on the phosphorus project. So based simply upon that estimate, yes, one month is fine. From my perspective, I'm just trying to understand what we, you know, what we need to, what the concern is with regards to the funding from the state with respect to, with respect to the, to the fiber project. As indicated earlier, $250,000 would come out of the sewer project, which isn't going to be impacted by the governor's budget, that we have a grant agreement and a loan agreement through the state of Connecticut. They're not, they can't reneg on that if we've already, we've already signed. So, we have $200,000 in the CIP saved, you know, already set aside, that's already been appropriated. So we're talking about $237,000, you know, which would be the local share, which 37,000 would be proposed for next fiscal year, and 50,000 in the four years beyond that. So, if that's, if that's the concern, and, you know, certainly, I understand that. So, I think it's a, you know, but there, but there are savings that offset that $237,000, significant savings, in addition to the fact that we have some critical needs with regards to our police, with regards to our, regards to our sewer project, that, you know, they're not going away, and they're not wants, they're needs, and that's why staff is here to answer any questions with regards to that, you know, that particular issue. But, to answer your question, Deb, with regards to, can it wait one month? Yes, it can.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
And here's where, you know, the slippery slope, I think this is, what I'm concerned about is Deb just mentioned, or Councilwoman Tompkins just mentioned, finding out what we're going to get from the state. That is not going to happen next month. That's going to happen sometime late spring, early summer, most likely. So now we've, with what she has just said, now we are looking four, five months down the road. Now, and I just want to clarify that she was talking about specifically the governor's budget and not the legislature actually approving a budget. Because if we're talking about waiting until May or June, wait till the legislature passes a budget, I am definitely not in favor waiting that long. I can understand if you want to wait until the governor proposes his budget and we move forward in March, that's okay with me, but I just want to make sure we're not going to, at the beginning of March, now say, well, let's move the line. Now I want to wait until the legislature passes a budget. That I'm, I could not support that.
No, that's not what I was saying. I was saying what he comes out with on February 20th, so that we get at least some sort of idea of where he's headed, even before it gets to the legislature. So, I would say by March, we should have enough information to decide on this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Does anybody want to ask any questions of either the chief or Joe Aloso about the project? I will just say that I know it's, one way to look at these expenditures is to break them down in little pieces, like it's going to cost $42,000 in this year and $52,000. I look at it as a total cost to the taxpayer, which is $711,000. And it has already been stipulated that everybody sitting up here accepts and understands the science of fiber. We're not here to debate the science of fiber, but I am ever concerned about making commitments to large expenditures of money without having as much information as I can to understand how we're going to pay for this. And the town manager has a plan laid out, he does have that, but the governor's budget, which will be released February the 20th, which is in 16 days from today, is what the town manager is going to base his budget on. We don't wait until May or June to do our budget. As you know, our budget deliberations will begin in March. The town manager has to present his in March, and those numbers are going to be based on the governor's budget. So we aren't going to wait that long, but we will know a lot more February the 20th than we know today as to where we may be heading. We also know that there's lots of other things being proposed in Hartford, such as taxing food, taxing medication, minimum wage increases, paid FMLA. This is going to affect everybody, and until I can understand the scope of how some of these things are going to actually play out locally, I would respectfully ask that we postpone this motion until our first meeting in March, and when we have that information, we can make it with all the information possible that we have at our hands.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Then I, I'll make a motion to table this item to the March 4th, 2019 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2019-09, Pumper Fire Apparatus to Bulldog Fire Apparatus, Woodville, Massachusetts, in the amount not to exceed $674,670.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four?
Go ahead, just.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2009, excuse me, motion to award bid number 2019-12B, Catch Basin Components, under State Contract Number 17, PSX 0009, Tinita Concrete Products, Yalesville, Connecticut, in amount not to exceed $75,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2019-13B, Concrete Blocks and Bricks, under State Contract Number 17, PSX 0146, to Cromwell Concrete Products, Cromwell, Connecticut, in amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2019-14B, Bituminous Concrete Materials, under State Contract Number 7, PSX, that, excuse me, Number 7, PSX 0238, to Tilcon, Connecticut, Inc., Newington, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed $600,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven?
Madam Chair.
I shall keep going.
Motion to extend the contract awarded to Jones Construction under Bid Number 2018-13E, Construction Repairs and Adjustments for Catch Basins, in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight. That's going to be our, our new one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to enter into a, an two-year agreement with Nucleus Augmented Reality. That's it, I guess, right?
Two years? Okay. I guess that's enough information for the motion?
You could say as proposed, and.
As proposed.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I, I'm the one, when we first discussed this, brought up some of the liability issues, and I'm not opposed to exploring the possibilities and entering into this agreement by any means, but I want everyone here to know, and anyone that watches this, by no means am I saying we should be doing this. I need a lot more information before I'm ready to make a vote on anything along those lines, but I certainly think it's wise to have a company that, it works in this field, representing us, looking at what the possibilities are, but legisla, I'm sorry, legally, I have a mountain of concerns before we were to ever implement or move forward.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Two, and I just want to assure, you know, the public that we're not, we're, this agreement does not mean we're entering into any specific contracts with anybody to do, to do anything in terms of advertising or putting up stuff on augmented reality, and I just think that's very important, to make that point.
Okay.
Because, you know, I also have some concerns, too.
Mm-hmm.
And it will be interesting to see how the technology develops.
Okay. Any other comments before we vote? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number nine?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, may I have a motion? Do we have any, do you have any other items you wish to discuss? Mr. Lee?
Just a couple of items. During public comments, issue came up with regards to inland wetlands review. The Department of Transportation will have to get any wetlands review through the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, so it'll go straight through deep, not through the local inland wetlands commission. The local inland wetlands commission works under the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, so they'll be taking direct review of that, number one. Number two is, you know, the notion that the trail has been forced upon the town. I would remind people that the town council approved the alignment unanimously back in February of last year, so the council is, you know, the council locally has taken the position that that alignment C is, should move forward for, through the design phase. So, it isn't anything that was forced upon anybody, it was actually brought to the council. There was numerous discussions about that, and the council accepted the trail going through that. So nothing's being forced as far as the town is concerned, number two. With regards to a review of zoning, zoning is controlled by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The council has no role in the zoning process. They're, you know, they're the ones who make the rules and regulations with regards to zoning, and I certainly would encourage anybody who has any concerns about zoning regulations and anything along those lines, should, should address those directly to the Planning and Zoning Commission. With regards to wetlands, we have a staff. If there's, if there's wetlands concerns, they go out and review it. There's, there's opportunities for people to be cited and have to come before the inland wetlands commission, that has happened in the past, and certainly, one of the things that was brought up this evening to me before the meeting was, you know, a possible violation of, well, it was actually, appeared to be from the pictures, a compromise to some of the protections that have been put in place, that got compromised as far as some heavy rain that we had recently, that will be reviewed. I think it's been reviewed already, I'm not sure what has changed since then, but I know that it will, staff will be looking at that, but, you know, when, when conditions are put on properties, it's up to town staff to, to make sure that those, those rules are being followed, and if they're not, there's, there's provisions in the law that allows for either people to be brought forward, to be ordered to make corrections, or to, you know, be somehow, you know, negatively impacted with whatever they did. It may be restoring wetlands, and there's, there's been instances where that has happened in the past. So, there is a, a, you know, there is a follow-through if people aren't following the rules. With regards to the concession stand bathrooms, this is something that, I'm not, the actual structure itself was, is a simple one, it's a block construction, there's nothing fancy about it. I will tell you, though, that when we have to follow state grant guidelines, which requires us to use prevailing wage, which requires us to have minority business enterprises, you know, having a certain percentage of the, of the contract, the, you know, the types of paperwork that needs to be done by the contractor really does increase the price to a great degree. Unfortunately, we do not have control, we have to, if we're going to take a state grant, we have to follow their rules, and that, and that 100% of the time makes the cost significantly more expensive than if we did it ourselves, but unfortunately, even some of the, if, if we're doing some construction, if we're not taking a state grant, we have to follow certain statutes as well with regards to prevailing wage and some other items. So, so, you know, the state of Connecticut, when we build new construction, you know, has, you know, statutes in place, which, which does increase, greatly increase the cost of it, and I can tell you that as a member, board member of the Council of Small Towns, and as a participant with Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, year after year, we go up to the state legislature, we ask to have some relief with regards to the mandates, with regards to new construction, especially these relatively small items, and, you know, it's been, you know, we haven't been able to make much progress as far as that's concerned. I know that Representative Pettit is supportive of changing some of those prevailing wage rules, and so is Senator Martin, but, you know, fortunately, or unfortunately, as it relates to this particular issue, they're, they're not in the majority in terms of the number of legislators who would like to see that changed. So, we do make efforts, but, you know, unfortunately, we have, we have to follow rules, and those rules in the state, at the state level, do increase the cost of construction. So, that's all I have to report under. Any other?
I just wanted to make a quick comment regarding the concession stand. This is not really a new project. This, this project has been talked about for a number of years with the local youth sports organizations, and they've been fundraising some money and trying to get it going, but it isn't just because there's a trail going through Plainville that we're putting up a concession stand. This has been a project talked about for several years by the youth sports in Plainville. They're happy that it's going forward, but it's, this is nothing that we just created out of recent memory. It's been out there for quite a while, and, and the planning and the thinking, and it took a long time to finally come to fruition because of funding, and I'm happy we'll be able to do it.
And the thought that there's already a concession stand at the pool is somewhat of a misnomer. The pool is only open from, you know, early June to, to, you know, the second week in August. You know, the sports organizations are out there in, in April through, through, you know, October, you know, so the, the bathrooms that are in the back part of the park have, you know, been closed for many years, you know, so...
Sure.
This has also been on the, you know, the radar screen of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for many, many years, so that this, this has been not, this isn't a new concept. It's, it's been discussed numerous times, and, you know, any suggestion otherwise is, you know, I don't know how to respond to that, really, so...
Yeah.